Okay, I'm going to call the Special Board of Alderman meeting to order at 6:33 on March 26, 2019, here in the Aldermanic Chamber. Tonight's prayer will be offered by City Clerk Trish Pietzou, and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us so, God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Clea. Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malize Gola.
President.
Alderman Tenza. Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire. Here. We have eleven members present.
Alderman Gidge did let me know that he was unable to join us this evening. Also in attendance is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton, and tonight we have a presentation on the Performing Arts Center with Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. Thank you.
For the record, Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. As a matter of course of business, I come regularly, once a month, to provide this body with an update relative to the progress and status of the, hopefully, the future Performing Arts Center on 201 Main Street. So, the last time I was before you, I provided you with some draft floor plans. This evening, the bulk of my conversation with you is going to focus on what we believe is relatively finalized floor plans. Of course, there'll be always minor tweaks and adjustments as we go, but this represents what we believe is the bulk of how the building would be laid out from a floor plan standpoint. So I will walk through the various floor plans that have been developed, and they are currently out right now, being analyzed by the subconsultants and getting cost estimates done, and hopefully we'll have some information back soon relative to how these floor plans work for us. So, also, as I walk through, I want to make sure I mention that Wednesday night is, tomorrow, is a big meeting for the Performing Arts Center Steering Committee. Happy to have all of you attend if you're so inclined or interested. That meeting will be a healthy discussion about the exterior, as well as a continuation of the interior. We are making our way through schematic design. We're on schedule, hoping to conclude schematic design by mid-April. So with that being said, this is the basement level here up in the, on the screen in front of you. I just want to point out, this area right here is the lobby of the basement level, and that has what we're looking at to be a monumental staircase. This staircase would carry us all the way through the building, all the way up to the top floor. So you have restroom facilities aligning one wall, you have a common hallway, you have gallery event space of approximately 2,000 square feet in one corner, and this is unprogrammed space underneath what would be the seating area, or the main floor of the Performing Arts Center above it. So this is almost 3,000 square feet of unprogrammed storage space as of right now. Then you have some back-of-the-house type uses, mechanical, technical supervisor, a green room, various type of storage, dressing rooms, and whatnot. So this is how the basement level, this would be subgrade, is laying out for us right now. So continuing on to what would be the orchestra level, and this would be where you'd have your main seating, if you will. So you'd have almost 500 seats, telescopic seating in the main stage area right here. This line represents the old building, that 1920s four-floor structure, and this is the traditional 201 Main Street Alex Schuh structure. This would be the stage area right in along here. Again, the telescopic seating, which could be pulled back, and this becomes all usable, multifunctional type of space. You have the back-of-the-house with some storage and some ancillary support. This would be your loading area in the rear. So to orientate folks, this is surf along here. This is alleyway. This is the pedestrian way. Our loading would be right in here. And then the front of the building, you have your lobby. Here's the monumental staircase I was referencing. You have your box office, you have your concession, you have some lounge area right here, some seating. This is the main entrance. The main entrance is looking to be at the corner of Pearl and Main. Again, the corner of West Pearl and Main is where we're focusing. Continuing on, this is just another level of seating that would be up in through here. This would be essentially the second floor, if you will. Again, some restrooms lying around the side. You have a lounge area, a VIP lounge, you have concessions, some seating. This would be open, and you'd look down through to the lobby, right in through here. So this would be open air. Again, this is the back-of-the-house, and this would be the stage right here. Balcony level, approximately 225 seats, right in through here. Front-of-the-house, common space right in through here. This is where we believe the marquee will be, right in through here, and this is a rooftop terrace, which would be seating for the venue in terms of entertainment space, possibly food and drink out here on the roof deck. So I just want to note that the structure does not go all the way to the perimeter of the building. It is actually pulled back. This is mechanical space back in through here. This is all open space for the volume to meet the needs of the stage. Back-of-the-house support, again, through here. And then the last floor is relatively straightforward. This is just what would be AV technical type of space use. So you have catwalks in through here, you're going to have some lighting apparatuses on the side over here. You do have some space that you can use, so this is going to be a conference room right here. Again, and then this would be administrative offices. This current plan uses the entire building, the entire older building, so it goes all the way up to the roof line. This is what the roof would look like. So the new structure, if you will, so what you're seeing right here would be your second floor, that currently kind of exists. The newer structure that would be built up would be essentially this area right here, pulled back. And then this is the older building right here. This kind of gives you a look at it, if you were looking at it like if you were looking at a piece of cake. So you have the basement level, you have the lobby, this is actually the audience chamber, this is the stage, this is all the back-of-the-house here, support, here's that catwalks that I was just referencing right there. And as you can see, the older structure for 201 Main Street ended somewhere right around And as you can see, we're going up to here, and then this building already exists. And then there's one last view for you. Again, that's a view of what it would look like from the top down, if you were looking at it, from the sky. And again, this just kind of gives you a sense of the elevation as to how high you'd be. So 62 feet from stage, stage is about 3-ish feet off of the floor, so you're really looking, if you're outside of the building, you'd really be something along lines of 65 feet or thereabouts. So again, that's just a quick overview of the floor plans that we're working on thus far. Last thing I want to make sure I touched upon is we are continuing to work towards trying to find the private capital necessary to continue moving this project forward. We have some very important meetings set up actually this week, and we are very optimistic that we will obtain the private capital necessary to be able to move this project forward into the construction phase. With that being said, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Have you given up on squaring off the building back by the surf parking lot?
And, yep, so let me go back to what Alderman Dowd is referencing. So Alderman Dowd's referencing this area right in here, there was a thought at one time to expand the building all the way to square this area off, and that, if folks were paying attention a couple iterations ago, that was in the plan. The architects came back to us and said that, you know, that would really drive the budget up, and that they thought that they had enough space within the current layout to just do it more efficiently, so that's why they've pulled back from that thought that they originally showed. So to answer your question, that is gone.
Alderman Lopez.
Just thinking about the buildings in the area, like 62 feet, are you going to be staring at George Russell's radio show, or like if you're on the balcony, or is the lights, how high is the, how's it going to affect people who are at that level?
So, just right in here, so I don't know who you're referencing, where they are. I think they might be on the-
Oh, George Russell, the radio show.
Yeah, they might be on the second floor, I think, second, third floor.
Okay.
Across the street. So if you are the roof terrace looking down, I mean, you know, you'll see downward onto that, but, you know, you got Main Street right here. And then all the lighting, if you will, so that's going to be, you know, self-contained, and so you're not going to have much lighting or visibility on three walls. And then the lighting off of the first floor, still needs to be determined as to how transparent, if you will, the first, second, and third floors would be. The steering committee, I think, has a desire to see it be pretty transparent, so you can see into the lobby as much as possible, which will make it more of an active space.
I agree with transparency, but I just wasn't sure how this compared to the building across the street. Like, is it taller than it, or is it around the same height?
So, that's a great question, and very early on, the steering committee gave feedback that they wanted it to fit in with the proportions, and they wanted to always keep in mind that the old and the new should blend together appropriately. And so those were guiding principles that our architect and designers took and have been designing with that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
In the area where the chairs will fold back up, that leaves space that you called multipurpose.
Correct, yeah.
Would you put tables and chairs in there? Where would you store them when they're not being used?
So this would be one area, right here in the basement, you could store here. But to answer your question, there is a plan that shows just under 300 tables and chairs in this whole blue area could be used. And I say that because I just want to point out, the blue area would also be the stage. But this whole area could be used for tables and chairs.
Just wondering, you know, moving them out and moving them back in, how easy would it be? If there's storage on that same level, it would be far easier, but I don't see it.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to, and I will defer to the operations folks if they think that there may be a way to do it, but I believe that they would have to store them on the basement level. Thank you.
Alderwoman Malize Golia.
Yes, just to Alderman Schmidt's question, the, I'm sorry, the operator, Mr. Lally, has been involved in all of this from the beginning, and there is an elevator there, and he seems pretty comfortable with being able to do a quick setup, take-down with things in the basement. And there, as I said, there is the elevator access. So on the main floor, of course, there's absolutely no space for storage. Yeah. You're welcome.
Alderman Clea.
Actually, I was just going to say exactly what the Alderwoman had said, is that he said they could probably do it within two trips. It would be that easy with being able to fold it up and so on, so.
Alderman Lopez.
I was curious about the trap room. I assume that there's a trap door on the stage?
Maybe.
Interpretation of trap room, but I was asking because I wanted to know if the trap door, is it like a lift or any mechanics, or is it just like?
It's just build, it's just preparing to build for the infrastructure for it if and when the Performing Arts Center was to have it.
Oh, because I was thinking maybe there's an alternative loading scheme for like-
If we have the budget for it, I think that that would be one of the first things that folks would look at trying to do.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Mr. Cummings, could you bring up the VIP one there? Okay. Now, that lounge is going to be on the second floor level, and most of the VIP, is it going to be VIP seating? Is it going to be hand-in-hand where the people are going to be, if you know what I mean?
So, I was waiting, actually, for this to come up. I'm surprised it hasn't come up before.
Well, I am a VIP.
Yes, you are. And for the room, everyone here is a VIP. It's actually just, and maybe we can come up with a better marketing term for it, but it's a way of just designating a certain area of the Performing Arts Center for function space, for if, say, someone wants to sponsor one of the productions that are going on, or if they want to do some sort of entertainment with clients, or if you think about it, a lot of the venues you go to these days have that luxury box-type feel to it. As we, this summer, toured a lot of performing arts centers, they had this type of space set aside. Everyone told us that this was valuable space, and that if you could program for it, you should. The group heard that, those sentiments, and have wanted to maintain this amenity to the program, and so far, it's made its way through. And everyone we've talked to is very excited about it, all the operators and the private sector folks who are looking at this in a very, very exciting way.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just a question. We have that one area set aside for the shell. It's my understanding the symphony is not going to play here, so who's going to use the shell, and who's going to pay for the shell, because they're not cheap?
So this, if I may, so again, this is just shell storage space that was originally talked about. We're looking to possibly tweak that and eliminate the shell storage space. As you can see, we've actually started, you're going to see that this is, starts to get eliminated as you go through the plans higher. And so we have had conversations with the symphony, and we believe that this will be unnecessary, because, as you point out, the symphony has a shell already, and they've offered it up to us as necessary. So, as I said, this isn't 100% finalized, but it's a good, it's a good iteration as to where we are right now.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Sure. Just a point of clarification, I'm on the board of the symphony, and they'll probably do small pieces, but the whole symphony will not fit on that stage.
Alderwoman Malize Golia.
Yes, Alderman O'Brien. Do not feel limited by the size of that VIP lounge. The other thing we discussed is that that larger gallery area on the lower level is also something that if someone wanted to use that for a larger before or after-event VIP sort of setting, that would be available to them also. And Mr. Lally, our operator, in talking about concessions, has said he'll have mobile beer and wine available, so if you were to desire one or both of those, your needs will be met. He will have the ability, but there really are two areas that could be used for a more enclosed, private VIP experience.
Madam President, if I may, absolutely. I was more going on and thinking of the concept, corporate, if somebody may sponsor and then have the rights to the VIP lounge for that particular show, and, you know, the moving and grouping of that group, you know, which I think is something, another way to increase funding, you know what I mean?
Yeah. If I may, that's why the larger area in the basement or in the lower level would also-
But I do appreciate the mobile beer, whatever it is.
Alderman Jettie.
So what is the total seated capacity? I think you said 500 for the telescopic seats, and then the balcony, how many?
225, 250, so all in, depending on how you lay it out, is 750.
Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
I know that we've looked into it in a preliminary matter, and I know that it could be a big expense if it was part of the Performing Arts Center, but the wires on Pearl Street that are going to have to be at least shut down during construction, and the reasoning behind not moving them, to me, seems kind of weak. Actually, I'd prefer they were buried, but going on the other side of the street, you know, what I've heard is it doesn't pass the goofy test, so it's like they don't want to do it.
Director Cummings?
Yes, thank you. So, your points are well taken, and so a couple comments on that. It is fair to say that the utility providers have sent us a very clear message that they would prefer us not to, you know, disturb the utility lines, and in particular, not bury them underground. But if that was to come to be, then they would be willing to have that conversation with us, but it would be at our cost. And so something that this body would need to understand is that is not in the scope or the budget currently for this project, and if we were to entertain something like that, it would also delay delivering this project in the timelines I've been previously articulating. So if this body wanted to even remotely entertain that type of project, I would suggest it's a second project, and it would have to come, you know, in relatively quick timeline, an separate appropriation, to be, and then you'd have to delay this project by a year.
Alderwoman Clea.
Director Cummings, tell me if I'm correct here. If I remember also when we were talking about the wires and the power and having to shut things off while, maybe what things, they said that they would do a reroute so that the businesses and so on would have, limited to no disruption in their power and so on, so that they would create workarounds, so that we did not affect the businesses right there. Is that correct?
That's correct. They would maintain service as much as possible and have very limited disruption if we were to just turn off the utility lines and the power as necessary to do the construction, although not optimal, that is what the utility company is recommending. So that is the current thought process right now. It's also the most cost-effective. If you were to even not bury the lines and just move the lines across the street, we would need easements potentially from private property owners. We would need to bear the cost of it, and both of those tasks would take time and money.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm not sure if she's, they're still the property owners, but I think some of the property owners might have been involved with Vivian's Dreams, so they may not be excited about a big cluster of wires in front. Also, if we did really start moving in a direction of adding the buried lines, I'm not personally like, I don't care, because I'm blind, so I don't, power lines don't ruin things for me, but if we did do it, we should do it during the project and before it, not when it's like a little fallen, trying to get off on the ground, and, you know, the last thing they need is to turn the lights on, get the business going, and then we tell them, okay, we're digging up your sidewalk. So if we do this, we should do it during the construction phase.
So whatever the pleasure of this body may be on that subject, I just want to be clear that it's beyond the scope of this current project, and it will be costly. I don't know exactly how much. We're actually waiting to get cost estimates on both, you know, reworking the utility poles to the other side or burying them underground. Once we have that data, and we should have that within the next couple weeks, you could have a more informed discussion on it, but you're looking at, you know, a half a million-dollar type project in either way, I would say, safely. And I would love to see the utilities buried underground from a streetscaping standpoint, from an urban planning standpoint. I think it would really help improve Pearl Street, no question, especially because, you know, there'll be limited access on Pearl Street while you're doing the construction, so you might as well do it once, the point you were making a few moments ago. But this city has a lot of priorities and has some real fiscal constraints, and when you think about, you know, this infrastructure project versus some of the other ones you need to make, I understand that that may not necessarily be the project that rises to the top.
We just fill it in with all the extra recycling. No, you say money.
Any further questions for Director Cummings? Saying none, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And Alderman O'Brien, the mayor has also joined us. Alderman O'Brien, do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to so move that the Board of Alderman go into a non-public session by roll call pursuant to RSA 91-A semicolon 3 Roman Noble 2D for the consideration of the acquisition, sale, and lease of real or personal property, which if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are reversed of those of the general community.
Need a second? Alderman Dowd. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malize Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 14 ayes.
And that motion carries, so we're going to have to ask everyone in the audience to leave the room. We're entering non-public session. Mike's got the motion.
But we're all going to wear capes.
Okay, so we are-
Still in a meeting.
We're still in a meeting?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Okay, all right. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Alderman seal the minutes of the non-public session by roll call until such time as the majority of the Board votes that the purpose of the confidentiality would no longer be served.
Okay, you've all heard the motion. Are you going to take the roll, Alderman?
I'll take the roll.
Okay.
Alderman Elijah O'Brien votes yes. Alderman Elijah O'Brien votes yes. Alderman Harriet Gathwright?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Brandon Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderwoman Shoshana Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Mary Ann Malize Goja?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
The President, Laurie Wiltshire?
Yes.
We have all ayes.
14 ayes, and that motion carries. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:43.
I need to.